Garage on the property. And this particular property is surrounded by homes on all four sides. This image here just shows the existing zoning, so the zoning currently is the agricultural zone. They are requesting the R one eight zone. And just as a reminder that our code does allow requests for R one eight if the property is under two acres, which this is. Here's just a rough concept that shows the intended subdivision if this application is approved. So you would have an existing lot for or a lot for the existing home. You can see there kind of in the northeast corner, then there'd be a lot to the west where that detached garage is. And then one to the south. So basically three lots for this corner is is the proposal. Just some images here for reference. So this is looking south along thirty two hundred west. This would be looking west along thirty eight hundred south. You can see in that image, the detached garage is looking at the front of the house, looking west. The south part of the property, so looking west. These are a couple of the homes on the east side of thirty two hundred west. A view of the existing detached garage.
Steve, can I interrupt you here on that detached garage? So on our plat, the red line has the garage on the property to the west. But then there's this white line that says eight thousand. So is this on one of the, which property is this on?
It would be on the one to the west.
Okay.
And and I'll talk, when we get to the development agreement, I'll mention how we're going to address, address that issue.
Okay, thank you.
That here's just, this is now looking to the east at the same garage. This is on looking north from thirty eight hundred south. You can see the homes are on the other side of the street. And then this is looking to the south. So the, the, looking at the north side of the existing house. And again, you can see the detached garage there. And that's the, the last image. And so with this, there is a development agreement that's proposed. And there's a number of standards. So the first is that there would be just two new homes, right? So that you have the existing home and the two new homes. For the new homes that have a three car garage, the new homes would meet our previous housing standards in terms of size, materials and design standards. Then the, or the development agreement also addresses some maintenance items. So there's some, you can see, for example, in this picture, there's some weeds that need to be taken care of. And the landscaping that's needing some repair. So as well as some repairs to the existing house, those are all addressed. And then there's a standard, this is in item number eight in the development agreement exhibit B, where that existing detached garage would be removed. And there'd be a new detached garage placed south of the existing house. So it'd be on that existing lot. And then each of the new homes would have a three car garage.
So will this new garage just go at the end of that driveway or will they enter from?
The other side.
Now, most likely we enter off of thirty two hundred west. So it'd be on the south side. So if we go back to the aerial for a minute. There we go. So right now the garage is to the west. What we anticipate is the garage would be on the south side of the house, kind of in this area here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And really, again, aside from maybe just to recap then, as far as the development agreement is concerned. So there are, there are maintenance issues like landscaping and repairing the existing home. There are the standards for the new home, and then there's also the replacement of the existing detached garage. That kind of hits the high points of the development agreement. And that, that summarizes this application.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it to the council for any questions or comments.
Are there any concerns about backing out of thirty two and maybe adding a circular drive to or some sort of drive access hammerhead or something on that lot on thirty two?
So that certainly would be possible. We do have, there are quite a few homes that front directly on thirty two hundred west. Many of them don't have a circular drive. I think something that, something like that would be possible. We just, we did not include that in the development agreement.
And I would think thirty, I mean, forty one would be harder to get out on to that one up to the west backing out. Yeah.
Well, this is on thirty eight and thirty two. This is, so about thirty two hundred west where I think it's not that bad. I've driven down it a lot, but in twenty years it might be, it might be a lot worse.
That question was brought up in the, the planning meeting and Mrs. Bradford says in the notes said they would be adding a driveway with enough room to safely turn around. So they wouldn't need to back on to thirty two hundred west. But that's not in the development.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had it on forty one, not thirty eight. In my brain.
The third lot. Looks like they're going to take out a lot of trees.
Yeah, most, most likely if we go back to, you can kind of see it on this one. Just, just given the placement of the, the house and most likely the, many of the trees, at least more on the east end would need to come down.
Well, it face, it'll face thirty two then.
Correct.
They can keep some in the west side, you know what I'm saying? See, they have some in the west.
Are they on trees and Russian olives?
Yeah, they don't look like.
Are they good trees?
Yeah, they really don't. Same with the ones in front of the house. Like they all need to be.
That looks like Siberian elves.
Those look like gray Russian olive, but not a tree person.
Well, I'm supporting this plan. Nice corner.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn the time over to Chief Evans for our protective equipment.
Good afternoon. Usually don't do a PowerPoint for these, but with this, I wanted to try to explain what's going on. So Eric, if you go to the next one. What we have is, we have a current situation with our current SCBA's. The Honeywell brand. That they sent us a note and they intend to not manufacturing or actually servicing anymore. Honeywell was a big company when we went with them. And they have decided they no longer want to be in that business. So back, they started scaling back in twenty twenty and now to twenty twenty two. And the one thing that we're facing right now is not only are they having a shortages of parts, some of their prices have raised two to three hundred percent. Just, I'll give you, for instance, just the mask part, the, the clear plastic in our mask that we have to replace quite a bit after a fire. We are now having to wait four months if we're lucky to get one. What we've had to do in the last little while is pretty much cannibalize some of our other packs to make a good pack. And it's not on us. We just can't get the equipment anymore. Just a little bit of a history. Back in about nineteen eighty two, we went with this particular brand. Though this brand has been sold a couple of times, it is basically the same air pack that we have had since about nineteen eighty two. I know that. I started a year or so after that, so I know what I wore back then. And in the early two thousands, they become Sperry and they sold to a company. In two thousand and ten, Honeywell International bought them. Honeywell is a very large company. We decided to stick with that company because of how large they were and because we were used to those types of SCBA's. And then in two thousand and fifteen, they made us a deal where we could trade in some of our old packs at no cost and get their new ones. So we were really happy with that. They were meeting all the standards and everything else. And then in twenty twenty two, there is no longer any local support. The only local support that we had, Honeywell will no longer let them work on their air packs anymore. Next slide. So our needs, we do need to move to a new SCBA brand. Obviously Honeywell's out of the business. We are looking at the MSA air packs. All surrounding departments in this area, every department with the exception of us now is using the MSA air pack. The, in twenty twenty three, there's a new SCBA standard coming out that we will no longer be able to meet. Honeywell obviously is not going to meet that standard. They've already told us that. So in twenty twenty three, which is coming real quick, our air packs will no longer meet any type of standard. The next slide. The benefits of going with MS, MSA, like I said, was you can see here, every department that we respond with is using that SCBA. That is a big safety concern for us. When a firefighter, when somebody goes down, our packs are going to be compatible to where we can still get air into each other. These new packs will also have thermal imaging camera built into them. Which is good. Where now we have thermal engine cameras, as our folks go in, these cameras are on there, we can be able to see heat. Or we'll be able to see an outline if there's a person there. So it's, it's not only for the firefighter safety, but it's going to increase our ability. Two local companies, both in the Salt Lake Valley can service the MSA air packs, which is good. We don't have to rely on one, one vendor any longer. And the old air packs, the only thing we're going to do is we're going to put them in training. You know, when we train, we'll use until we just, till we break them and then we just can't replace them anymore. Next slide, this is a picture of our, our current SCBA's. And the next slide is just a picture of the new MSA air pack. And you see there the built in thermal imaging camera that's on these air packs. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
We've had trouble getting replacement parts. Can we get these air packs?
We've been told by the
In time.
Yes, we, we, we have been told that if we can order these packs, we can get them. They gave me a thing. I'm, I'll tell you, we, we, we should be able to get them between eight to twelve weeks. MSA has been around for probably longer than anybody else. MSA started in the business of mining. Obviously, MSA, their air packs were used in the coal mines and things. And then they branched out into the fire service years and years ago.
Honeywell's been around for a long time.
Yeah, Honeywell was. That's what we thought. These large companies and I, I don't know what it was. Everything was going good. We received a letter that said, hey, look, we're out of business. We've decided we're not going to go down this road anymore.
So we, we can't get them before the two thousand twenty?
Yes, yeah, they, they will be here before the new standard goes in.
Is there a lot of retraining necessary for?
You know, there, there will be a little bit of retraining just because of, of the packs we've used, but I, once you put on a pack, yeah, there, there's some bells and whistles you're going to have to get in, used to, but you're still putting a pack on your back, you're putting a face mask on and you're going in. So we will do training. MSA is going to come out, they're going to train our people. I, I don't see a lot of downtime, probably within, within a week, we will have them on every one of our units and everybody will be trained.
Did every person have the thermal imaging before?
No.
Or was there like one person that did that and everyone?
Well, we, we will have thermal imaging cameras, the bigger cameras.
Uh huh. Oh, you'll still use those as well.
We'll still use those as well, but we only have, there's, there's one on each truck. And with this, when they're going in, they're going to be able to see more quickly. The biggest thing with the thermal imaging cameras on these SCBA's is the firefighters are going to be able to tell if they're going into somewhere it's too hot, they shouldn't be in.
Okay.
It'll tell them, hey, you're, you're pushing the envelope right here.
That's good. Good safety measure, measure. Hey, any other questions? Hey, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
On the agenda tonight.
Yes, yep, this will be on our regular meeting tonight. All right, we'll now turn the time over to Nancy Day. She's joining us on Zoom to discuss an amendment to the wireless lease agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. It's good to see you. So this resolution is the execution of the, the third amendment to the wireless lease agreement that we have out at the fitness center. That's where it's located. And we've actually been working with this company for about seventeen years now. So the reason for this amendment to the agreement is they, in order to have improved service in the area, they need to put in a generator. And the generator is going to be located down below. All the other pieces of equipment that they're updating are on the roof. And they're in the same location where the old pieces are at. So it won't, it won't really impact that area at all. And I think Eric, I, I don't know if you can show the diagram. Is that? Is that, here we go. So, and, and this was with the amended agreement, but just to make it easy, we're pulling up one, maybe one of the, one of the slides to, just so that you could kind of get a feel for where this is going to be located. And while he's doing that, we worked with them and assessed the best location because we want, you know, we want to be sure that it's still aesthetically pleasing. Here we go. There you go there. Thank you, Eric. So yeah, you can see where his cursor is at. That's where the generator will be. You can see that half circle just to the left. That is the indoor track. So that gives you a perspective. So you're, you're close to thirty one hundred south there. So this is kind of set behind. We asked him to do that. We also asked them to put around it a block wall that will match the, the exterior of the fitness center. So it doesn't look like an eyesore or, or something that was, you know, kind of afterthought. And then there'll be a gate at the one end so that their technicians can get in there if they ever need to do repairs or anything along those lines. So with this agreement, we felt like the city should receive more funds. We're currently receiving just under twenty five thousand a year. This will include a twenty percent increase in rent payments according to the terms. And additionally, three hundred dollars per month because of putting this generator in. So we feel comfortable with the decisions that have been made and feel like this is a good idea and are asking for execution of this resolution. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Anything from the council? No, seems you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to our new business and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman. He has two items on the agenda, SMI eight twenty twenty two and PUD three twenty twenty two. Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. This first application is a request from Corbin Benyon, who represents the property owner in Thomas Meadows. And this is the fourth and final phase of the ARA industrial park. And if I could get Eric to go to the first slide, we'll kind of go through some photos here. Appreciate his help. So this first slide is the overall areas for phase four. Just sit south of the two oh one South Frontage Road. As you can see, it does occupy a portion of the old racetrack. The next slide, we just have a couple of illustrations. This is looking west along the South Frontage Road. What you're looking at there is phase three. And then the next slide is looking to the east along the same frontage road. So we will have improvements here. That will be a park strip, a sidewalk and landscaping similar to the last slide. The next slide is just looking back to the north along sixty five oh five west. So this right of way was built as part of phase three, which is to the left on the slide. And the property to the right is the, the area in question. That will be phase four. The next slide is looking to the northeast. We're standing on Beasley Road here. And this will be the southern portion of the development. And the next slide is just an overall, so this was Ara's master plan that was started a number of years ago. The two buildings on the far right hand side of this illustration are phase, are will be phase four. The street that you see that goes between phase three and four is sixty five oh five west. That was built, as I mentioned, with part of phase three. And the last slide is the subdivision itself. So the orientation here north is to the left of this illustration. So there are two lots, lot four oh one and four oh two. The total acreage here is forty eight acres. And this will complete phase four of our project. That is our report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, let's move to PUD three twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mayor. So this application is a request from Robbie Thompson and also Russ Tolbert with Hallmark Homes. They are representing the Sunrise Baptist Church located at thirty five fifty south, forty four hundred west. So this is just a zoomed out version. To the north, you've got commercial, there is a small pocket of residential. To the east, you have forty four hundred west. To the south is the Trinity Methodist Church and to the west is existing storage units. So this next slide is, it's kind of a fun project in that the Sunrise Baptist Church is proposing to add a children's wing to their church. And so they have all this vacant ground that they will not use. The property is zoned RM. There is a development agreement dating back to April twenty twenty one. And so they would like to restructure the site by moving the parking for the church to the west and propose a townhome development here. So we'll just go through a couple of illustrations here. So the first slide is looking at the church itself across on forty four hundred west. Next slide is just looking at the south side of the church. The site's been well maintained as far as their own landscaping. The next slide is of the area that will be used for the future parking lot. This is just to the west of the church and also adjacent to the commercial to the north. And the next slide looks due west. Those are the storage units in the back. And the next slide is looking to the south of the other Trinity Church. So the concept plan, which is the next slide, shows how the project lays out. So you have the, the church in the northeast corner. You have the new parking lot that will be built to our current standards, which will have landscaping, lighting and all of the amenities that go with a new parking lot. And the remainder of the site will be developed with a townhome project to be built by Hallmark Homes. The next slide shows the proposed architecture. This is sort of in its infancy. We still have some work to do, but these are rather large units. These are twenty five, over twenty five hundred square feet, probably the largest townhome development that we have in the city. Hallmark would like to build a product here that, that families can stay as opposed to moving in and moving out. So they've got a product that they're excited about building here. That's kind of a traditional farm style architecture. There will be basements here. So they're excited about bringing this to West Valley City. And the next slide is the subdivision plat itself. There are thirty three units here on just three and a half acres. So the density is just a little bit less than ten units an acre. So that is our report.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council?
Can you talk about parking and public roads?
Yes, good question, Councilman. So this project does have a development agreement that dates back to April twenty twenty one. We also have the application discussion with Hallmark Homes began in October of twenty twenty one, long before the, the private street discussion came about as well as parking. At the beginning of the year, the applicants started to submit applications to us with various site design. We evaluated those. We had a lot of comments just due to the nature of the church, the church's parking. So we worked with them for a couple of months on that. The parking provision came about in February twenty twenty two at four point seven five. So this project is parked at four point seven five spaces per unit. The application was submitted prior to the city's initiation of the abandonment of private streets. So this project is vested with private streets. It is one of three that we're currently working on with private streets. So the project here will have private streets that do meet our standards as far as asphalt width, turnaround capability, fire maneuverability and such. So they do meet our four point seven five parking requirement and streets will be private.
Thank you.
Is this administrative? Is this is this one that we could legally say no to or?
It is administrative. It is a straight up subdivision. Although it is a planned unit development, it is a subdivision. So it is administrative action.
Okay, seeing no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you.
We now have the consent agenda, which is Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, ma'am. This is just a public sidewalk.
Okay. Now we'll have our communication item, which is code enforcement policy and procedures. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of slides here that are not a whole lot different than our last conversation regarding code enforcement process of a couple of months ago. Really, I think the point I wanted to emphasize going forward from this point, if Eric, thank you, Eric, is the two different tracks that we discussed last time are are two different processes. They all have the same the same desire, the same goal is to get compliance with city with city codes. And so as I just run through these real quick, please stop me if you have any questions, but the notice of violation differs from the administrative citation in several significant ways. The notice of violation is a process that eventually takes us to court where we would get a judge's order to come on the property. And so we issue notices of violation when we think we're going to go that direction. We think we may go that direction. Administrative citation, on the other hand, is a one time citation, not unlike a speeding ticket where someone is doing something that is easily remedied remedied or is going to be temporary that would be illegal. And so we go that route. And you can see down through the list, the the different the the differences there. The administrative citation is quite a bit quicker. If Eric maybe hit the next slide there, I think is illustrative of that. Notice of violation. Typically, you know, on day zero, we issue a codis, we issue a courtesy notice. Two weeks later, we'll issue a notice of violation. If the property doesn't come into compliance, then that notice of violation expires fine start twenty five dollars per day per violation and it gets scheduled to go to court. The court sets up that process, sets up the the court date, giving folks typically three weeks to be able to arrange their schedule to attend the hearing. So approximately after eight weeks is that hearing. Typically, the ALJ will give the the property owner one final chance of a couple of weeks to bring the property into compliance and request a hearing before the city is ordered to enter the property debate. So you can see that typically, if everything goes well, it's it's, you know, twelve weeks or or three months before we're able to solve some of these problems. Whereas an administrative citation will issue a warning. Those warnings can last anywhere from a day up until two weeks. We typically somewhere around a week to ten days will issue that warning. And after that time, after a week or or less, we'll do the citation that we can go back and anytime after that, those citations start at a hundred hundred dollars for the first one and then double to two hundred dollars. And then the level three is four hundred dollars. We can do a notice of violation at any time while we're doing administrative citations. For instance, just let me give you a a for instance, somebody parks a car over the sidewalk. And the code enforcement officer sees him doing it and 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 will tell him, hey, here, I'm I need you to move that move that car off the sidewalk. Kids are cutting out of school. I'll give you an hour. I'll be back. If it's here, I'm going to issue you an administrative citation. That's a that's a fairly typical way to issue an administrative citation. If the guy says, the property owner says, well, I can't move it. It's broken down. The officer is probably at that point going to switch to a notice of violation because the possibility of us having to go on and actually remove the vehicle is is there. Maybe somebody's maybe somebody is actually not being forthright about that and they've moved it back and forth. And the officer will then switch back to an administrative citation. They don't think they're being dealt with upfront. So different different processes and different situations call for one or the other. But again, the the end goal is to bring the property into compliance. And that's really the extent of my presentation.
Okay, turn it to the council. Don.
Recently, I'm sure you're aware, we've had several citizens come to council meeting and complain that they were given five days to remediate something. And I know, you know, I've got a notice of violation in my pocket that I received back in August and it gave me two weeks. What's the difference? And why five days?
There, just depending on what the violation is, if somebody's got, you know, a lawn full of weeds, is five days sufficient? You know, we've we've kind of felt like we're a little bit behind on some areas. And so to nudge people to get that done, we we thought five days was appropriate to get those types of things done. And so that's where we went five days. I don't I don't think we actually went back but for a handful of those and issued an actual administrative citation or went to a notice of violation. Really, really kind of depends.
One of my, I know the yard and if it was a violation on weeds, somebody must have died in the building. And I don't think she did because she came to the council. But there hasn't been a weed in that yard for years. And on mine, the courtesy notice was very unexplain unexplanatory. Said I had outside storage. And, you know, I I called him back and I said, what do I have the storage out there? I've got a couple of seating areas, a gazebo, you know, you've got a little, there's a white bucket out in the middle of that. Yeah, we took the rocks out of our pond and put them in there while we were fixing the pond. And that white bucket's been there for five years. You know, it's not in our way. It doesn't detract from a whole lot. Well, there's a blue barrel up by the chairs. Fifty gallon water bucket barrel. We incorporated it into the seating area. But those were outside storage and that isn't my definition of outside storage that that would be, and it had been there for several years too. You know, and why suddenly are they violations? They're all moved now, but why are they suddenly violations?
Well, I, you know, I I mean, you make a good point. We if all of us got in a car and and drove up and down the street, we'd have this many different opinions on what is a violation. You know, sometimes we had one gentleman, just comes to mind, had a lawnmower. And and he thought that was just fine. And and problem was is he had like thirty lawnmowers and he had this. And so his, hey, that's that shouldn't be a violation. Well, all right, you know, just having your lawnmower out wouldn't be a violation. Having thirty would. Would a blue barrel typically be an outside storage? I mean, it it could be. It could be read into that as a definition. And each officer is different. And we've recently kind of felt like we needed to kind of be a little more assertive as far as code enforcement. And so we've encouraged the officers to kind of look at things with a little more assertiveness and 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 make those determinations. But you know, that's that's why we frankly have an ALJ to kind of settle those differences between what a lot of people may or may not think is a violation.
No. I know the officer is to wander with us. But I I was out working in the yard the day he stopped and took pictures. He recognized me. He stopped to talk to me. And I said, so what is my next assignment? What have I got wrong here? He said, nothing. The next day or by that weekend, I had a courtesy notice in my mail. But he told me I had nothing wrong. Why couldn't he have told me right then? I could have started working on it.
That's I don't know. He could. He certainly could have.
That that would be a more courtesy to me than getting the notice in the mail.
Sure.
Saying, oh, by the way, I wasn't right when I told you nothing the other day.
Absolutely.
Which might be why it's not working for us anymore too.
So you know, yeah, some some things, I mean, the as we, as I tell each one of our code enforcement officers, there's there's nowhere to, there's nowhere to hide. We don't have, it's not the police department where you have thirty, you know, different officers working one beat and each code officer has his own beat and we try and work with them and typically they do a they do a great job for us. Occasionally, we have to, we have to make changes and and that certainly is the case on occasion.
As I see it, I think that's where the citizen complaints are coming in. They don't work with the citizen. It's all black and white. And as I said, you know, five years it was white. One day it turned black.
Right. Well, yeah, and I and and I think that's something that we've recently looked at is is as we've I mean, the code enforcement officers, it's much easier to work with people than to not work with people. And 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 frankly, we get better compliance when we're working with people. But that can also go too far the other way where we accept any reason for and and I and I think that we have over the last the last, I don't know, couple of years, we've been maybe a little too willing to to work with people. And I, you know, I I always willing to, is that pendulum in the twenty five years I've been here, that pendulum has swung back and forth multiple times. And I I think my job is to figure out where the pendulum is and where we've got fifty percent of the people unhappy, fifty percent of the people think code enforcement is a bunch of lazy do nothing. And fifty percent of people think they're a bunch of Nazis. And it's probably about where we need to be. And that's what I'm always trying for.
Oh, yeah. I don't, go ahead. Thank you, Scott. I don't know what I am, but I think personally, just we tried to have a community, started to have the citizen here in our city to comply with our rules on regulation. Lane, to be honest with you. I give you a couple of examples, very good point. One of the trailer in our area, it's been there for over a year, it's still there. People, they move out and publicly they went to court and they came back and they still live there. It's just still there. And I'm the only one trailer, but I mean, it's a RV, a RV trailer. Not only one, but all the ball of them. And it's sitting right in front of the house, way back to the house. Even the building set back there, they live there. Nothing happened. But our people, but our people, they try to comply with our city and they have a spot, maybe just right here or right there. It's not very nice or really neat. But those people got ticket. And they push really hard for those people. And sometimes they really rule to people, to be honest with you, and that's why I was frustrated a lot of time because so many so many people told me about it. And I know people, those told me the truth because I trust them. And I saw them. I went over, I checked it. I went over and checked it. And I saw it, you know, I'm not gonna sit in a home and listen to them. I went over to their house and I checked. But the thing is, the bottom line here is we've got to make a change. We've got to do something about this. We've got to have people to comply with our rules and regulations, not go out there and punish them or harsh to them or rude to them or very mean to them. They already got a ticket already. They worry about the money to pay for that ticket. Or they worry about the time to comply with our city already. So we don't have to say unkind word to them, you know what I'm saying? Not to be honest with you. I do want to say with you, that that why I was frustrated.
Thanks, Tom. You may remember back at Strategic Plan, how I was I was surprised maybe by learning some of the things the city can control and not control. I don't know if you remember my some of my experiences that I was like, holy cow, really? City can do that? Because I am, I'm a freedom loving guy. And I want people to be able to do what they want to do and and not be harassed. But ten months has given me a little bit of information and also compassion with my neighbors that they they should be able to also take care of their own space and have their own space. But then we also have to think about the other neighbor that wants a nice neighborhood. And we all should have a nice neighborhood. So I think it is a balance that we need to to focus on. I think there's a lot of things that we need to do better in code enforcement. And and I have a whole list, but I think if we can't improve it, then we need to just discontinue the whole the whole thing. But I think we can. I think we can improve it. My intent of asking for this meeting is to have improvement. And those improvements would encompass transparency and concerns for the citizens on both sides and clarity for both the citizens and staff. Those three things and too often code enforcement seems to be subjective question or call on the in the field. And I think if we can identify or simplify some of those things that we're enforcing so it's less subjective, that may help. I think our focus shouldn't be on the penalties, but more on compliance. And I think we need to be more tolerant than than less. Those are my my thoughts. A couple of examples. I hope you guys brought a snack because I've got got lots to talk about tonight on this. Yeah, okay, good. Couple of examples. Citizen had a storage container shed for which they had a permit for from five years ago or so. I don't remember the date. But they were cited for it. Well, they had to show them the permit, which is a city document. They had them. And finally, the the code enforcement officer wouldn't take it off, but it was the the administrative judge that took it off. Why did they have to go through that whole hearing process to have the administrative judge take it off when it's a city document? We should be able to communicate, hey, this, they have a permit for this. It's just another one. Some people were in the process of re-landscaping their yards. So it looked like a mess. But they were in process. I mean, it was three weeks of work. They get a they get a notice. Another one, a new flower box was built right in the front yard. Beautiful. It's got like eighteen inch flower box made out of redwood, really nice. But there's dirt on top. Well, they get a violation because there's dirt. Because it had vegetation on it. So those just don't seem like great things to give notices for. And so maybe we could be more specific on the things that we want to to enforce. I said in the past, courtesy notices aren't courteous. So change the name or let's be more courteous. It really ought to be a courteous note. Hey, notice this. Please take care of it. And instead of five days or ten days or fifteen days, I think we ought to give them with mailing. And instead of five days or ten days or fifteen days, I think we ought to give them with mailing, give them seventeen days. Um, I've had some of the citizens contact me, they've had multiple notices just arriving, arriving a day apart. So they get a notice, probably go back to your, and one's probably a citation, one's a courtesy notice, I don't know, but for a citizen, that is bombardment for them, that's how they feel. They're getting a letter every day or every other day about issues and they already feel overwhelmed by the first letter. Um, no callbacks from the code enforcement. I know one of the issues was the officer that left employment in West Valley. But but still, there's, I'm hearing from a lot of people, a lack of communication from the city code enforcement officers. So we need to do a lot better in communication. Another code officer said, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, thirty percent landscaping, is that our our rule? They said that you had to be sixty percent landscaping. And argued with the homeowner that it was sixty percent and not thirty. And when the citizen wasn't convinced, the code enforcement officer just hung up on. So again, we need to do better as servants of the citizens. Communications, I think, um, if there's any question of what it is, a photo should be included with the installation or the notice. Um, I'd love to maybe sit down with counsel again and and talk about and review those codes that are um, enforced. And what we really want to have enforced, what we don't. Um, another thing, uh, I don't know if you know this, but we live in a desert. And I think, I think we need to probably change the thirty percent um, and allow zero-scaping or desert scape. And and you know, this drought hasn't um, let us all know we live in a desert, I think it should have. A couple other of my big items. Um, I think the rear yard code enforcement items, I don't think we should be giving citations for rear rear yard items. As long as they're behind a fence and there's not a health or safety issue. I I've done a lot of Google Earth looking. Um, and there's a house in my neighborhood that from Google Earth, there's probably ten boats packed in the back of that yard. You know, is it health or safety issue? No. Is it fun for the owners? No, but they they can choose how they use their property. Um, two more things, abatements, I think they ought to come to the city council for approval. I don't think they should just be allowed to to happen as a process. And then, I know this is going to be a weird one for me also, uh, but I'm going to suggest that we have a code enforcement citizen advocate. Somebody that works at the city that uh, isn't in code enforcement, that is an advocate to help them through the process and uh, to advocate for them. Those are my thoughts. Any counsel thoughts or responses?
I was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I was here on Friday for a meeting and a gentleman walked in and was, because we had to leave the door open for my person to get in. And he had his violation. I thought I had a picture of it on my phone, I don't, so I'll have to figure that out. But he called the person that gave him the ticket. It was an administrative because it was a hundred dollars. Um, that's what I'm assuming, I didn't read it. Um, but he had called her and she said, sorry, I'm going to be on vacation, so I can't come inspect it, so you'll just have to pay the money. So she didn't say, I'll extend it two weeks, and then when I get off vacation, I'll come look at it. She just said, sorry, I'll be on vacation while it expires, so you just have to go pay it. So that's kind of that communication thing. And then I've gotten a lot of complaints about no return calls. And then I had the same person probably that talked to Scott about, the officer just hung up on him. So customer service to me is one of our biggest things. Do we record the phone calls over there so we can audit our officers?
We do not.
You probably need to do that, maybe citywide. Because we are getting, I'm getting more than just code enforcement employees being rude on the phone, so that's a whole nother story though. So anyway, there's the three I got just over the weekend.
And when I called back and the officer had quit, there was no notification of that, phone just rang and it said, this is no longer a working number.
Yep.
Oh, so no explanation either. Okay.
His number is out of service. Okay, what do I do next? Well, I knew who to call next, so I
Oh.
That's how I found out he had
The average Joe does.
Appointment, but the average Joe doesn't know that they can call Lane and ask him questions.
And say, what the heck?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Tom, I cut you off, sir.
Sorry. You know, I I I thinking about Scott is the guy, he's the Scott Harmon right here is the guy. He was running for House or not. It's agenda was the code enforcement, so it seemed like he very well for for this particular topic right here. I'm thinking about maybe it's a game of the oversee this department. Yeah. Um, you know, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
It is, we we can vote on that, we can vote now or we can vote up, you know what I'm saying? But I think that this guy, he he good at it and he uh, he's right. I mean, there's so many things happen in that department to be be honest with you, Lane, I mean, I have to say that. Um, just recently, this one to make make me not very happy. The guy over eighty years old had this small problem in his property. And uh, he got a ticket, okay, and he oh, he 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 knew that, he got a ticket and he tried to fix the problem, so tried to fix the problem, but he over eighty years old and he said, I'm sick and give me a couple, maybe a week or two weeks and I'll try to finish them up. Uh, no return call, left a message, no return call. And later is uh, he got a mail from uh, our city or department, said, well, four hundred dollars. And he was upset about it, put aside for sale. So I'm not gonna put up with these people, to be honest with you. I think we need to return that money to that guy, to be honest with you. He asked the time for to fix a problem and we didn't re- we didn't recall and later he said, well, I call you, but uh, your your car, your phone is uh, full, you know, more voicemail there and so I can't, but that's a baloney. Um, because he got a ticket right, you know, right after he got that that message, he left a message for the uh, the obli- I mean, uh, officer, uh, code enforcement officer. So I'm thinking like that, it's like eighty years old, I mean, it's over eighty years old, many people like that and they have fixed income and they have so many things and and they have problem doing, they need to have some kind, we have to have good communication with them and try to have them out and not like punish them and that, and I think that's very frustrating. Maybe Scott gonna be looking at, and then I want to have like uh, moratorium into April into May. And he land on it and he come back and he tell us about which area we need to focus and which area we not, we don't have a focus, for example, like the white bucket, like Donnie has right there, we don't need to focus on that kind of thing. We need to focus the big hobby trailer or something, cars parked on a uh, in front of the house, on the grass, everywhere, nothing happened. So I I think as we go in the wrong direction here, try to figure out how to come back and do the right thing for the people in this, in this city. That's what I'm asking and we can have a vote for that. Scott, do the moratorium into April and he can do that, you know, wait, vote up or down, uh-huh. I, yeah.
Mayor, thanks, Tom, and uh, let's go and have a Will.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit here. I don't know that I've received as many comments um directly as a council member, but I certainly have been, you know, at the meetings and hearing uh, some of the residents' complaints and I've also so followed a few threads on social media about um, some things that residents are experiencing and I think, you know, you mentioned there's a pendulum either one way or the other. I think there is a a happy medium, a balance that we can find that um, most residents would agree is is practical and more of a common sense approach. I think I'm in support of uh, Councilman Harmon's suggestions and uh, would support what he's mentioned uh, today and perhaps um you know, us, holding a special meeting to discuss this and further, um, that would be warranted as well and you know, I've done ride-alongs with police and I've done, I spent the day with fire, I wouldn't mind spending the day with code enforcement and and seeing the challenges that they're uh, faced with and uh, hearing things from, because we've only heard things from the resident side and and um, I think it'd be fair to hear on both sides.
Okay, thank you.
I think that uh, a lot of uh, Councilmember Harmon's suggestions, we should look into some more and 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 really flesh them out and and talk about one by one. I liked a lot of those ideas. And uh, it's important to treat our our residents as people and uh, and give them respect. Um, I think on the other hand, uh, people don't like being told that uh, they're not in compliance or or that uh, that they can't do what they want to do with their property and and it's causing troubles for the neighbors. Who, you know, they have a right to to live in a well-maintained neighborhood. And often what we hear is not the full story. They'll say that they're, they only did this and for only so long, but really there's other things and it's been longer. But I'm 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 not saying that that every resident's complaint is not warranted. But uh, but we should be careful about just going with one side of of the story. This is a tough issue and we're never going to please everyone. There's going to be people that think that we do too much to control and there's going to be people that say you're not doing enough to. But we should always treat our residents with respect and answer, reply their to their messages. And uh, most people I think are reasonable.
Okay, thank you. So we have a fifth Tuesday at the end of November. Anybody want to complain?
Or or we might have another meeting where we don't have anything else scheduled.
That's lightweight.
We do this all, the whole meeting, whole state meeting.
And and talk about each one of these items and
Just go through the ordinances.
I'm I'm with Scott, we 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 need to, we need compliance.
Right.
And we and we need solutions that will help us to get there.
Well, and from, and I may have misunderstood, but on this document, it says we give them ten days, but then I also heard that it got peeled back to five days. I think it needs to be a set and no changes. I mean, everybody knows what the rules are and the rules are the rules. There's no, well, we want to do this, we're going to do this. It's just, here's our ordinance and we're going to follow it one hundred percent. And that's why I think reviewing it, I don't know if we'd have time, we could try to do it at the tail end of these meetings and then if it doesn't work, November twenty-ninth is free night.
I I won't be here.
Okay. You what?
For sure.
For sure? Okay.
Out of the next two, two weeks, look for state meetings.
Our deadlines are until Wednesday at noon.
Until Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
So far, we haven't heard a whole lot coming in yet, but yeah, we don't really know till.
Yeah, we won't have meeting on the eighth because of the election, but we'd have the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
And we can always add this to the agenda.
Just have it at the end of everyone.
Time to cover, we just continue it till the next one.
Can avoid other communications.
Oh, like presentations? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So the other thing is everybody could read through the ordinance and see if there's could you email out exactly what is, if there's anything in any other parts than just code enforcement? Okay, and just have that so everybody could look at it and then
Send us all.
Okay. Okay.
Lane, how how many abatements do we do in a month?
Um, in a year, we do approximately a hundred, it depends, a hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred, we might have done a hundred and fifty here and there, but it's usually around a little over a hundred. It's about four percent of the caseload, three percent, it really depends on the year.
And what's what's an abatement actually consist of on a usual basis?
Uh, cost-wise?
You know, just action-wise.
So typically, an abatement um, would, I mean, how it's performed, is the police department um
I mean, like scale, scope.
Oh, typically.
Is there a little, is it landscaping, is it garbage?
It's typically either landscaping or garbage. And so we'll show up, contractor will show up with a dumpster. So the contractor goes over prior to to uh, the abatement, gives us an idea what it's going to cost, how long it's going to take. It's typically they have a dumpster of some size. We've, we've taken, we've taken ten dumpsters off of people's property on a regular basis, um, but it's always at least one. Um, I think there are five-yard dumpster um, is is pretty typical by the time we get to the point, but we've also, would we just cut weeds? Or we just tow one car or remove, you know, a mattress that's been leaned up against a garage or um, you know, anything that should be inside that's being stored outside or any kind of landscaping thing or vehicles is is pretty, pretty typical. End up costing um anywhere from five hundred to to a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars is is probably within that range, um, but they'll they'll go and we've done some of those ten yard, ten dumpsters, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars um, by the time you get all that, all that added up, so they're not, some of them are not insignificant.
So let me ask you another question on abatements, and this goes to your list, Scott, from the, I was just wondering why that was a particular issue. I don't remember if you went into much detail. Abatements never happen unless you've been all the way through the process and including the court process, is that right?
Right.
So there's no officer going out there and saying, I'm going to go abate your mattress, or there's no process other than going through the the ALJ system to get to an abatement, that's, is that right?
Right. So if somebody gets an administrative citation, it's a one and done. So a lady who gets an administrative citation doesn't need an inspection. It's done, it's over. Um, the officer, there's nothing further for the officer to do other than if it's not in compliance, the officer at some point could come back and write in another administration. But there's no inspection required by somebody, the citation's been issued.
So that's even confusing for myself, so I kind of am liking his uh, resident liaison to help them understand what all the gibberish means.
Right.
Because I've been listening to your presentations for ten, eleven years now and yeah, I wouldn't have known that this one, you don't come back and inspect it, this one you do, and then you leave them alone or whatever.
Right.
So.
So why, why do you just pay a fine and then you don't come back and inspect if our goal is compliance and not fines?
Because it's a one-time thing. It's uh, you've parked your car um across the sidewalk. The officer says you, you can't park your car across the sidewalk, but I know I'm not going to be able to go to court and get an order to remove that because you're remove, you're resolving the issue every day. You get in your car, you drive to work. There's no violation to be abated, so to do a notice of violation doesn't make any sense. Um, so
Another example of that would be like the car doing the switch from the street to the
Across the sidewalk. The officer says you, you can't park your car across the sidewalk, but I know I'm not going to be able. To go to court and get an order to remove that because you're removing, you're resolving the issue every day. You get in your car, you drive to work. There's no violation to be abated. So to do a notice of violation doesn't make any sense. Um, so.
Another example of that would be like the car doing the switch from the street to the.
Right.
The driveway, right? You got a car that's sitting out in the street, it doesn't have uh, registration, it's got some issue, right? And so the police come and tell them to get it out the street. So then they put it on the driveway. So then are we gonna spend? Through the uh, the NOV process, twelve weeks like Lane's saying to go abate that? No, you're gonna give them an administrative citation. And after, usually you have the conversation with them to say, listen, if you just take care of this, go get it registered or stored somewhere else or do whatever you're gonna do with it. Then they wouldn't give an administrative citation. They, they let them take care of it. It's usually in the scenario where you've got. This repeat uh, problem or a long-term problem.
So the gentleman on Friday was just landscaping. So if it was a hundred dollars, why would he have gotten an administrative? Citation for landscaping.
And that goes to. The real policy issue that you guys have to decide from like Scott was talking about. This is not so much a process issue as it is. Some of these issues, especially the landscape issue, you can't abate it. You can't abate the landscape issue unless all you're doing is cutting down trees. And by that, what I mean is. You can't go in at the end of some process and say, we're gonna abate your property, we're gonna install. A sprinkler system, right? We're not, we're not gonna be able to go in and say, we're gonna install water wise landscape, we're not gonna install turf. So there's no end. If people are not uh, willing to comply. And that's why you give them an administrative citation. If that's a council, what the council wants us to do from an enforcement standpoint. So in the example like uh. One of these ones that's often brought up um, that I'm personally aware of over on King Arthur Drive. The guy has been sitting there with. Turf torn off of his lawn for, well, what used to be a lawn, his yard for, I don't know, two or three years. Can't get him to take care of it. Why? Cause he knows in the system, there's no way. To abate that. We can't make you grow grass, we can't make you. Uh, install the landscape unless. We're willing to make the pain deep enough from a, from a fine situation that you. Would go to that because that's less pain than actually putting in the, or more pain than actually putting in the landscape. See what I'm saying? With there's, if there's junk in a yard, if there's an improb, inoperable vehicle, if there's. Outside storage. In most of the cases of. Uh, code enforcement violations, there's something you can abate. You can either work with them or find them, but at the end, there's some sort of resolution. In a landscape situation where there's. Literally no landscape or deficient landscape saying, you know, some definition between nothing and yellow to brown to dead to. Actual uh, dirt spots. What other recourse do you have to do other than to just leave them alone or to find it?
That, that goes back to my comment about seriouscape or desert scape, which is dirt.
Sure.
And uh. As long, you know, and I'm okay with that, as long as the, it's maintained, it's not overgrown. And that's something we.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And again, for us, all this is, is you tell us, and I appreciate at one point you made Scott unclear. Cause we're getting beat up on both ends of this all the time, all the time. And uh. Being able to establish where that level of desire is at the political level would be very helpful to us.
I, I don't know about Lance Scott and when, I think some five. People, they still have, you know, uh, maybe. The grass and the weed mixed to each other, but they, they maintain very closely and they keep it very nice. Compared with other people, they have a, a no grass, basically it's all dying in front of their house. And people, they have, you like, have grass and have weed, but they maintain real nice, but I think just. Um, the artists, they try to do their best and I have to uh, give them credit for that. Um, here, Lane, um, I'm thinking about. Nicole gonna send stuff out to us and we look at, we study that. And then we'll discuss more from now until we get it done. So maybe just tell your. Code enforcement officers, maybe just. Stop from now because you're gonna confuse people, confuse uh, to, and confuse people to um. We gotta get this one straight out first and then we can. Put it to uh, implementation, not city.
Do we have a moratorium through the winter from escaping?
Here's what we do as a moratorium. And, and frankly, I think the officers are a little more lenient than I would like. They, they say end of October. We're not gonna enforce landscape violations until next spring when we can come back and work with you. And you can do whatever your plan is that you're gonna do. So in that sense, yes. Well, I, I kinda argue this internally with the staff. I, I don't know that we should completely. Do moratoriums on landscape, cause sometimes all you're doing is saying, go cut your weeds. And sometimes I go to Lane and said, I don't care if there's a moratorium, go enforce that uh, property and get them to cut their weeds. But yes, to, to the short uh, answer to your question, there is a de facto moratorium in place. If like, for example, you didn't have a yard, we're not gonna go to them now at this point, end of October and say, get a yard in. And get it done in the next one month, two months, three months into the winter.
That's what they said in September, to a bunch of citizens.
Sure. But they didn't say, we're gonna come in and put it for you. They said, you do it and you have time in August and September to do it. And it, and if you guys as a political body say, well, that's not enough time, well then tell us, if you don't want us to give landscape tickets after. July first, uh, fine.
Well, from a practical. Growing sense of it, October first is the very. Latest, you should, October first, giving out any type, the end of September, any kind of notices. September's still on, only somewhat good. It depends on the weather, whether or not you can plant perennials or. I mean, you can't plant annuals there. You'd have to be planting perennials to add to your landscape. So even September for, you don't have enough landscape. Um, when they're giving the citations out for, you don't have the right percentage, in our ordinance, it was supposed to say, and I haven't checked it. Um, at full growth, thirty percent. So if you have an ice plant, you put it in in a four inch pot, it's this big. But in two, three years, it's gonna be six feet around. So that ice plant should count as a six foot plant. When first installed. So do our, have our officers been trained to know? What species get what big? So they, so how are they making?
Point in time.
How are they doing the plant? I mean, our ordinance, when we talked about it, said that whole growth, thirty percent.
I've never seen that in the ordinance. It doesn't mean it's not there. I'm not the smartest guy out there, but I've never read that in the ordinance.
Okay, we'll have to maybe go back to the minutes. That's what I thought we asked for when we asked for the local scape.
The full growth.
The full growth. Yeah, I've never, I've never seen that terminology in the ordinance. Steve's smarter than I am on that stuff, but I've not seen that.
That's what we were getting, but.
It's, it simply says live plant material and a point in time.
I think if we go to ten percent or something less than thirty, I think probably we'd solve it anyways, but.
So and then the other thing, I had this on a totally separate note. Um, it was brought up in one of my other meetings that the state legislature this year changed the ordinance or the state law. That a city cannot require more than thirty percent landscape. Or they don't qualify for fed or state funds to do like the flip your strip or local scape funding. So have we changed our?
Remember how we did all these changes at the beginning of the year?
But we did definitely change that.
Pretty sure we did. I can go back and double check.
Well, this guy calling about the sixty percent.
There was a.
Made me.
Well, okay, but let me, let me, let me. New, only put a caution in.
Say what?
A new build requirement that we think couldn't require a specific landscaping.
Well, they're saying in our other meeting that to create, to qualify for this funding from the state, the city has to say. Thirty percent is the highest they can say as far as landscaping in the front. Okay, just making sure.
I think so.
I think we, I think we could adjust that and allow. Other options.
Okay, yeah, and if maybe the full growth is too hard. Maybe we just change it to a lower percentage so that we know at full growth, it'll be this. Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
And one more comment, Lane. My wife texted me and said, make sure he understands. We didn't mind removing that stuff.
Well, and, and that actually, John. Yeah, exactly. Dawn, and I, I appreciate the fact that you brought that up. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna use you for an example here. A lot of times.
Put myself out there.
Like Will said, like uh, Lars said, and even you said that, we, we're not hearing the whole conversation in here. Like. I know more of the information on the example that Scott brought up with his next door neighbor, some of which maybe Scott doesn't know, or maybe he knows all, I don't know. Uh, Dawn and I had conversations at his property. Dawn was fully cooperative and aware and he's like, yes, I know I do have issues that need to be taken care of. Thank you, Wayne. And yes, we had these communication issues to resolve and get over, but yes, we're, we're doing this and working through it. My only point in there is, there's a whole lot more going on in these conversations than what we're able to cover here in. Even an hour, uh.
But I think also to go along with that, a courteous notice to Dawn and to probably eighty percent of the population is gonna take care of it. You know, eighty percent can just, yeah, I'll move my bucket.
Yep. And, and to your point, it does.
So let's be courteous.
No, I'm saying it does already. And, and also in a, uh, to the point on the one item on the list, the courtesy notice, yeah, I'm all. With you there. If we, we've been through like seven different iterations of what we call the courtesy notice. I think we're pretty good in terms of. The, the strength of the language, either encouraging compliance or not, and we've been both ways on that. And my preference, depending on discussion with the council, would be just to change the name of it. Like you said, if we don't think it's courteous, then we change the name to warning or whatever, but.
So I, I deal with, you know, housing owns land all over the state. Sure, we get courtesy notices from all sorts of municipalities. Because we have weeds on our property.
Right.
And there are courtes, courtesy notices and there are courtesy notices.
Sure, yes. And I, and again, I'm gonna say, if you, if you guys wanna get softer in the courtesy notice, I'm fine with that too. We're fine with that. Just tell us what you want.
So are you saying courteous as in the employees need to be more courteous or?
You mean the language.
For the letter, I think also.
The letter also needs to be.
Send it out in mauve or something pink and. I'm kidding.
I think you tried that.
I'm kidding, but we could definitely soften.
Yeah, like the gentleman on Friday, I mean, truly, he couldn't figure out why he was even getting it. And then when he couldn't get anybody returning his call because they're on vacation. And me looking at the picture that the officer sent to him and I'm like. So just on the courtesy notice saying landscape, doesn't tell them anything unless they've sat through ten years of this meeting. Then they're like, oh, you might have, and all I could tell from the picture is, okay, your grass right up next to your chain link fence. Might be over the six inches, because the lawn was mowed. So it's just little things like that. They're like, I don't know why, but somebody needs to tell them.
Door storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't include what he was kind, counting as outdoor storage.
Yeah, so I think.
Had to call in, I said, wow, what am I storing out there?
Yeah, so.
Ninety percent of the conflict and, and misunderstanding communication here again, like I was saying earlier, centers around this whole landscape question. So if you guys can tell us from a definition standpoint, either through the codes or through the. Just the discussion, so we have a better feel philosophically. Yeah, absolutely. That'll help us.
Yeah, that we, we looking forward for Nico has sent stuff out to us and then we can look at it and then maybe we can study and try to figure out, we can. Have a couple meetings.
And then just one last thing, I think goes back to what Mayor said about um, customer service. This is a, a major face of. City for, for the residents. And we need to have our best customer service face on. In these areas and. I know I'm only here on one side. I don't, they haven't called me yet, but, but uh. The citizens that I've talked to, and I've only talked to two dozen probably, it's quite a few though in the last six months. That they're not, and they've never been treated worse. And that just breaks my heart.
Well, and maybe just recording phone calls. I mean, I made three or four this morning and it was, and your call may be record, recorded. And this way we could actually say, no, the officer was really kind to you. We listened to the audio.
Yeah.
And you were the combative and protect our officers when that needs to happen. Because I'm sure not all of them are hanging up on people or rude.
You know what, Mayor? I think we can send those people, code enforcement officers to Tara and Angel, they can train them well. To be honest with you, Tara and Angel can train them. So maybe just send them to uh, Tara and Angel can do that.
Customer service.
Yeah, customer service, communication, yeah. They're good, so just.
They're the angry ones too.
Yeah. Well, and it's hard.
Save some money.
When you have an angry customer, but. And that's what they need to be considered as customers, always, for me, the Nordstrom standard. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, we just wait for the information and we can study and try to work it through and make it, nobody's confused about this.
Hey, thanks, Lane. All right, the city calendar, does anybody have? An issue? Or anything that they see missing? So for the grizzly games. Angel and I were speaking about that and she thinks that's easier to just give a council member a suite for that night. Um, she's gonna make a spreadsheet of who has what and give it to all of us. So if somebody wants to switch, they'll know who they can switch with. And then we don't have to call her so many times and say, who has this night? You know, do I think, it puts it back on us to be responsible. And then if you know you're not gonna use it, if you'll just put something out, I'm not using mine, can anybody else use it? And just. Because I think it's fun to take other mayors, other council members, when I, you know, just different people in the county. And then, you know, residents are my number one person I pick, but. Does that sound like a good plan on anybody or is there anybody objecting? Okay, hey, then we just find, okay, we'll just keep going forward on that one. She's out this week, so she'll get it to us probably next week. There was only those games last weekend and then we've got a bit of a break.
Fourteenth is next.
Okay. So she should have the chart or the list out by then and then, oh, they're not on here. So then we'll get that. Given her the full list yet? Well, there's a few later on, but anyway, okay. Well, if that works, any other questions on the schedule? Calendar. Okay, we will move on to potential future agenda items. Something tells me I have something on my phone. Nope, not a future agenda. This is just a, lights are out somewhere that need to be fixed. So anybody have future agenda items? Nope, not here.
I do have one here.
Okay.
Uh, the Health and West Valley Committee was wondering if we would like to do a proclamation for World Suicide Prevention Day. It's November nineteenth and it would be in conjunction with a suicide survivor. I think you guys may have gotten that information in your boxes.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a proclamation. It's one we haven't done before, so I just wanted to ask before I put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Do it if it's our, our committee that's.
Yeah, been asking for it. Okay, so what day would the, would we do it?
Nineteenth, so yeah.
Well, the nineteenth is a Saturday, so would you just have it on the fifteenth?
It would probably be on the fifteenth.
Okay, that works. Yeah, I just knew that that was a Saturday night. Okay. Hey, so you know, others? Anybody been awfully busy?
I attended the Utah Mosquito Abatement Association Conference. Sunday, Monday and this morning.
Okay.
And I, I pity large drive every day because I went up there Sunday night in the snow. Came back today, it was snowing in Park City, but cleared up as soon as we got out of Park City. It was an interesting convention. It more geared to mosquitoes and. Anatology and that than I'm used to, but. But it was a good convention. Good meeting. Learned a lot that'll help me with explaining what we're doing in. Was our South Salt Lake Valley mosquito abate.
Okay, well, that's good. Councilman Willis, okay. Councilman Whitstone.
Thanks. Uh, it's been a couple of weeks, but I attended the Chamber West All Day Board Retreat. Um, up in Park City a couple of weeks ago. And uh, it was a great board retreat, a lot of good information, but there was a presentation. And, and I don't have my notes with me, but it, it essentially. There was a House Bill passed that will allow cities to decide whether or not. there was a House Bill passed that will allow cities to decide whether or not, and they kept calling it not a tax, but implement a fee for hotels in our city to charge residents that would um, help promote, this fee would help go to promote, um, certain promotions or incentives for residents to come stay at hotels in our, and attend events in our city. So they said this would be coming to our council at some point. I just thought it was an, an interesting, um, issue that we'll be needing to decide on here pretty soon.
You remember at all what the organization is that would be collecting those monies?
I don't, um, I wish I had my notes with me, but, uh, I can see if I can find, I can get that to you.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
Councilman Norpho and I went to the senior, Harmon Senior Birthday Party for Pete Winter's Birthday Party.
Pete Harmon.
Yeah.
The Pete Harmon, Pete Harmon Day at the.
And that was the first time that, uh, I went to the senior center there.
Careful, they'll recruit you.
They won't let me in yet. I'm not quite old enough, but, but yeah.
You're always welcome.
I think so. Um, but yeah, in fact, I told a friend of mine who's a little older than me that they would love to have a volunteer, so they'll throw a, throw a volunteer, but it's a pretty cool place, lots of people there. And the training room was as spectacular as they told me it was.
It used to be half that size.
Yeah. Pretty cool.
So great, thank you.
Hey, can, can I take a moment of personal privilege?
Sure.
Councilman Whitestone?
Yes, sir.
Don't have to go back on the video. Uh, his mom would like to know if Sam arrived safely.
He did, and, uh, he's here with me, so he's doing great.
All right, I'll tell her.
All right. All right, do we have a need for a closed session?
Come on.
Okay, and we just have one more motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned. See you at six.